This special program is sponsored by Willamette University.
Welcome to this exclusive K2 Your Voice, Your Vote digital forum. With the biggest change in the history of Portland city government coming in January, the old city council of four commissioners and one mayor will be long gone. In its place, 12 new Portland city councilors. Voters will pick three councilors from four new districts. Dozens have applied for the jobs. Today we'll hear from Portland city council candidates from District Four, which includes the west side and the southeast neighborhoods of Reed, Woodstock, and Selwood-Morland. Candidates are here to answer your questions.
What's the first step to deal with homelessness? I know it's a very complicated situation. That's, to me, the biggest problem in Portland right now.
How are we navigating the fentanyl crisis sort of with the legislation that's been repealed, Measure 110?
In this area, I feel there is a need for more affordable housing.
Where the candidates stand on the important challenges facing you. Your vote will have a huge impact on Portland's future. This live digital forum with candidates from District Four starts right now. From K2 and Willamette University, this is Your Voice, Your Vote, Portland City Council Forum with Steve Dunn. Hi, everybody. You're watching a digital forum with eight Portland city council candidates from the newly-created District Four. They're here to address the important issues facing the city. We have a lot of them. I'll introduce you to them in just a minute, but first of all, a message from this program's sponsor, Willamette University.
I'm Steve Thorsett, president of Willamette University. We are proud to support K2's Your Voice, Your Vote election coverage. For nearly two centuries, Willamette's mission has been to educate leaders for civic society. We believe a healthy democracy depends on thoughtful and ethical leaders in government, and especially on an informed electorate. We're grateful for the discussions and debates K2 brings to our community. Thanks for watching.
And thank you, Steve. And due to time, we could only invite a limited number of candidates to this forum, but there are more than two dozen candidates running in District Four. Now, we have a way for you to hear from them and the candidates running in the other districts as well. Coming up on k2.com and YouTube, you'll soon be able to watch candidate interviews from all four of the Portland city council districts. We'll post the candidates' written statements. Look for them on the week of October 14th. The candidate criteria for this forum includes this: filing to run for office with the city, filing a candidate committee with the Secretary of State's office, filing contribution and expenditure reports with the Secretary of State's office, receiving certification to participate in Portland's small donor elections, and being among the candidates with the highest number of individual contributions. Wanted to introduce you to the District Four candidates participating in today's forum in alphabetic order. They are ready to go. Eli Arnold, Olivia Clark, Mitch Green, Ben Hufford, Chad Lichten, Stan Penkin, Moses Ross, and Sarah Silke. Now, the candidates drew numbers to see who would start. We could begin... Olivia, it's you today. You ready to go for this?
I'm ready to go.
You're going to be number one. The first question, we need just a one- or two-word answer. What issue will be your top priority as a member of the new Portland city council? Start with you.
Public safety.
Public safety. Let's go to you, Mitch Green.
Housing and climate.
Ben Hufford.
Housing and homelessness.
Chad Lichten.
Homelessness and housing.
Stan Penkin.
A government that functions.
Moses Ross.
It's all about livability.
Sarah Silke.
Trust in government.
And Eli Arnold.
Public safety.
Okay, we sent a news crew to hear directly from Portlanders about their concerns. Let's begin with this topic. Let's play that.
I would ask you to work on the houseless situation and work with the communities and work with our county.
But just, you know, what's the game plan? What's the game plan to try to help them, the people that need help that are on the street?
Homelessness, one of the top issues facing the city, no matter who we talk to, what district, as a matter of fact. When it comes to your district, what will you do as a city councillor to help those struggling with homelessness? We would appreciate if you'd keep your answers to a minute. And Mitch Green, we begin with you on this one.
Yeah, I take a compassionate approach to this, and I want to build upon the "housing first" tradition that we've got in the city. I think that we can move much faster. We've already got the dollars to spend in this county to deal with the problem. The city now needs to be serious and step up to the plate and say, "We're going to permit these shelters as quickly as possible. We're going to clear the red tape. We're going to create shelters that meet a variety of needs for the folks on the street." I think that if you want to get folks stabilized, you have to be resilient and flexible in that regard.
Ben Hufford, you're next.
Homelessness is an incredibly complex problem, and one of the challenges is we conflate two different issues when we talk about homelessness. There are the people who are already on the street who need significant wraparound services, and there's the housing model that we have that has created an unaffordable Portland to live in. And so when there's a shortage of housing, then more people are pushed to the street, and the people who are pushed to the street are our most vulnerable people. With respect to the homeless shelters, we need shelters and wraparound services. And we have a government that governs by a press release right now. We say, "Oh, we're going to issue, we're going to create 1,200 shelter beds." And when I got that second email from Ted Wheeler saying, "I'm promising you 1,200 shelter beds," that's when I decided to run. I'm an architect, and I feel that 1,200 shelter beds should take about eight weeks to make effective, to get on the street and to permit and open. And being told twice in two years that we will get some shelter beds and not seeing them delivered is a sign of why I'm running.
Chad Lichten, you're next.
Thank you. We've knocked over 9,000 doors this campaign, and this is the issue that comes up over and over again, so what people want us to do something about. I believe that empathy is the greatest strength of the city. I don't think it's a weakness. And that means being responsive to the needs of people and not lumping them all into one category. For families experiencing homelessness, long-term rental subsidies cure almost 100% of cases. For individuals experiencing homelessness that have disabilities, whether that be addiction or mental health problems, it's a lot harder, and so we have to have the right services. We actually know now what kind of shelters move people to permanent housing. You have to give them a private room with a door that locks, make reasonable accommodations for pets, personal possessions, and companions, and provide onsite services for them, like wraparound services, whether it's drug treatment or job training. If we do that, the data says that we can move people to permanent housing at four times the rate of the congregate shelter model that we've used in the past, which has basically been a failed model. Congregate shelters are the right thing for a weather emergency, but they do not help people move to permanent housing.
Stan, you are next.
Sure. Well, first of all, we need to get the county and the city working together so we can be more effective. We have a humanitarian crisis on the streets. While we do have to build housing, it's costly and takes a long time. So first priority, get people off the streets, get them the services that they need. And I think we've had, we've shown some success with Safe Rest Villages and the temporary alternative shelter sites such as the Clinton Triangle in southeast. They've had a good record of getting people the services they need and then getting them into housing. So we need that continuum of care from all the way through to bring people to stability and ultimately permanent housing.
Moses, you are up, sir.
I think from my perspective, I've been Neighborhood Association Chair in Multnomah Village for the last eight years, and I have noticed that many of the strategies that the city has enacted when it comes to housing and the county has enacted has not taken into account the perspective of those folks that are being directly affected in the neighborhoods for those solutions. And so, for instance, when we had a Safe Rest Village placed in our neighborhood in Multnomah Village, it's now started out with 30 pods, now it's gone up to 100 pods. It was up to me as the Neighborhood Association Chair to make sure that the neighborhood understood that the reasoning for it, and we made sure to help mitigate the impact of that housing on the neighborhoods so that we had full buy-in. And I think that's what's missing here. There's great solutions that are being talked about here, but we must have the buy-in of the rest of the community, and we cannot govern by fiat.
Sarah Silke, what do you think?
I think we need to treat this like the emergency and crisis that it is. City council has declared a housing emergency every year since 2015, so this is why I talk about trust in government. We need to act immediately. We can't wait for another year, for another thousand beds. We have over 5,000 unsheltered homeless in the city of Portland, and we have less than 3,000 shelter beds. I agree with Chad that we need a room with a door that doesn't end... The Safe Rest Villages are great, but I think it would be much more cost-effective to think a little bit like Ben is in terms of, like, we can get something out in six weeks, not in six years. That solves the problem. If we need, you know, when you say something is a state of emergency, you make special rules so that you can get shelter up and available quickly and efficiently. So I've been working in Portland's permitting department for the last two years. Our codes are complex and hard to enforce and hard to interpret. City council, this new council, can come in and say, "We're in a state of emergency. Here are the temporary rules that apply so that we can get housing and shelter available for people now."
Let's go back around the front here. Eli Arnold, your turn.
Yeah, I've worked as a bike cop downtown for the last seven years, and so I spend more of my time with homeless people than I do really with my own family. And, you know, I know homeless people who've died this year, and more will die, you know, in the next six months. There's a systemic side to this problem. There's also an acute side. And building housing, building Safe Rest Villages, these are ways to treat the long-term problem. But in an emergency, we have to act differently. And the acute problem needs managing. Just because we can't solve a problem today doesn't mean we can't manage it. So within city government, the Bureau of Emergency Management and first responders are the only entities really designed with urgency in mind. And we need to use those powers and those organizations to manage camps, to manage a situation on the ground, to mitigate the harms to the homeless people, to residents in the neighborhoods, businesses, and all the rest. Because just waiting for perfect solutions isn't actually kind to the people who are going to die on the street in the next six months.
Olivia Clark.
Wow. I agree with everybody. I think these are great answers, but I'm probably the only person here who's actually worked on affordable housing. I began my career in housing, and I'm sorry to say things aren't any better today than they were when I first started. I do believe that the city needs to get out of its own way in citing shelters. We need a lot more attached shelters, and as someone else said, we need a whole continuum of services. It is an emergency situation. We're not acting like it. I think the city can do more to remove barriers to building affordable housing as well as homeless shelters.
We're going to move on to the next question, also a tie-in to the homeless issue. What is your answer to business owners who feel homelessness on city streets is impacting their ability to make a living? What is your answer to business owners who feel homelessness on city streets is impacting their ability to make a living? Let's begin with Ben.
I am a small business owner. I have three businesses downtown in Portland. I have my architecture firm, I have a bar, and I have a pizza place at Portland State. We see those challenges every day, with broken windows, with people coming in who are needing help. It has a major impact for us. It is a real thing. I think the way that we go about that is a couple, a couple ideas. One is, we definitely need to treat small business with respect in Portland. 28% of people in Portland work for small businesses. We can't turn our back for the people who have given so much to the city and want to continue with the city and who have endured our last four years. With respect to helping people on the street, we need to, we need to help them right away with the shelters and the services. I think that the, the challenges of running of a business downtown are very difficult, and we need to, by increasing the quality, by increasing the quality of downtown and the number of people who are willing to come downtown, we will really help the businesses that are there.
Chad Lichten, your turn.
Thanks. I run a small business called Rose City Chest, and it provides after-school clubs and summer camps for kids at about 20 different locations a year, and has about 10 employees. And it's hard because, given the current situation, there are a lot of places that parents aren't willing to bring their kids in Portland. And so I see it. I really see the problem. The truth is, it's going to be very, very hard environment for small businesses while we've got, you know, so many people that are unsheltered. And when we're proposing sort of ideas that would only make the problem way worse, like the idea of a military-style roundup where you go block by block and push every homeless person into a parking lot and put a fence around it like they're doing a Grants Pass. That's something that people are seriously considering doing here. We would lose all of our federal shelter dollars. Tina Kotek would bop us on the head and take our money from the state as well. So we need to have evidence-based policy and do what works there. I'm very proud that I've gotten the support of a lot of small business owners who have rallied behind this. They want somebody that's going to fight for small businesses and families and not just corporate PACs.
Stan Penkin.
So small businesses are definitely being impacted. So as a leader of the Pearl District for many years, we are very concerned about the viability of our neighborhood, which has deteriorated in recent years. So we took some actions. We have helped small businesses by forming a, what we call a business support committee that tries to support businesses in many ways. We created programs where we help small businesses when their windows get broken, cleaning graffiti programs, cleaning trash on a regular basis. We also formed a new nonprofit called the Northwest Community Conservancy, where we are providing humanitarian services on the street. We have outreach workers who are talking to campers on the streets, building trust, getting them into services and into shelter. And in the past 18 months, we were successful in getting 1,500 people off the streets into services or shelter, or even connecting them back to their families. So we have taken the action that we need to do in that neighborhood.
Moses, your thoughts?
I think it boils down to two things. We've got to, first off, support the small businesses that are out there right now that are struggling, that are having their challenges. Recently, a small business office was created by the recent administration, but we need to fully fund it and make sure that there is opportunities to make, for small businesses to mitigate the effects of the homelessness issue and how it's affecting their businesses and their economic stability. And second of all, we need to make sure that the homeless are brought, are dealt with in an empathetic approach. Empathetic in the sense that we need to make sure that we know that they are human beings, and we have to be able to provide service to them in a humane manner. One thing I was reading here recently is that 30% of the folks that are out on the street have addiction problems. 30% of them are, have homelessness problems, and 30% of them just don't have their options. They don't know what options they have available to them. We need to be targeting those folks, and we need to be looking at all sorts of options to help bring them off of the streets and get them into shelter. Now, when it comes to addiction, for instance, you know, we have the Bybee Lakes option, and that's not a housing-first option. That's a, you've got to stay dry option. And we need to expand those options as well, not just stay with the housing-first model.
Sarah, it's your turn.
Yeah, so again, this, well, first, I would say, I agree with you. I hear you, and I see you. I go down, I work downtown, and I see the people on the streets, and it's painful to watch, and it's got to be even more painful for the people who are living on the streets. So this is where I say it would be a huge win-win if we get together as a community and treat it like the emergency that it is and get people in shelter immediately. It's, it's going to be good for business, it's going to be good for the people who are on the streets, and it's going to be good for us as a community.
Eli, come back around to you.
Yeah, if you're a business owner who feels like the city's neglected you in dealing with homelessness, you're right. So I've had multiple business owners break down in tears because of what they're having to deal with. These are people who've invested their lives in our city, and they deserve some responsiveness. We have been very hands-off with dealing with this problem. We haven't really had a solution for them. And, you know, this, this unregulated, unpredictable camping situation is harming everybody. So it's harming the person on the street, it's harming the business owner. Just a couple weeks ago, I had to write a mental health hold on a woman wandering the streets in front of small businesses, no pants on, non-responsive. It's not the first time I've had to do it for her. How, how is she supposed to, you know, continue on with her life in this situation? How is the business she's in front of supposed to do what they need to do? We have to do something different.
Olivia.
Well, I agree that we need to have compassion for the homeless, but we also need to have compassion for the small business people. I met with one small business person downtown who owns a shop. She said a man came in and used her hand sanitizer to basically take a bath in her store, and it was very intimidating, and it scared away customers. And if we don't take care of the issue downtown, our businesses are going to continue to leave. We're not going to be able to retain small businesses, and we're not going to be able to attract business and the capital investment that we need in our city as well. So we have to take care of this.
Mitch Green.
Yeah, so I'm an economist by training, and I think my diagnosis of the situation is what, is we're seeing the costs come to fruition of decades of underinvestment in our social safety net. And so when a small business owner tells me this is becoming unbearable, I agree. And so I think there's a few things we can do in the immediate short run. The city can help these small business owners overcome the cost burden associated with this. While we invest in the systemic solutions to poverty on the streets, I was talking to the person who owns 21st Avenue Kitchen and Bar, and he said, "I have an opportunity to buy this building, but I can't afford it." So I would think that we can take some approaches where we can help small business owners take a more direct equity stake in this building, lower their costs while the city's serious, and make some direct investments in evidence-based policy to solve this problem in its root.
And we're going to stay with the homelessness issue because, honestly, whenever we went out with our crews, no matter the district, it was always the number-one issue everybody wanted to talk about. So obviously huge for Portland voters out there. Let's talk about the camping ban in public places. Do you support fining and eventually jailing people who camp on public property when they've refused repeated offers of shelter, including the option to move into the city's temporary alternative shelter sites? Do you support fining and eventually jailing people who camp on public property? Let's begin with Chad on this one.
It is very difficult to fix by enforcement what you bungled by design. If you don't build a shelter system, if you don't do the work of citing and permitting those and working with the county to open them up, you're going to have a problem that is very difficult to solve. And right now, we are looking at a situation where this would be the most expensive and ineffective intervention that we could do. I've never seen a study that says that jails are a cure for homelessness. And the people that wanted to finish, I want to ask, what's the next move? I hate to use a chess metaphor, I apologize, but once they leave jail, where do they go? They exit right back to homelessness. And so city council has wasted a lot of time debating, how long should the jail sentence be? Seven days or 30 days? And never answering the question, how are we going to get a shelter for them when they get out of there? So I don't think this is a serious idea. I think it's something that you hear sort of on the fringes.
Stan.
Well, I don't think criminalization is the answer, but somehow we have to change the cycle of people living on the streets. So I think, I think we have to take a compassionate approach, and I think as far as fining or criminalizing people living on the streets, we have, we have to really be very discreet in how we do it, and I think we only do it in the most egregious of cases. For example, the camping ordinance requires that you don't have fires in your tents. You don't have trash accumulated around, around your tent. Because these issues, and you don't block sidewalks, these issues are impacting our neighborhoods. So we have to try and change the cycle. But I think most importantly, what we need to do is have outreach workers out there talking to campers, building trust, which doesn't happen overnight, it takes time, and get them into the services they need. As far as fining and criminalization, to me, that's an absolute last resort because sometimes that's what it takes to change somebody's life.
Moses.
Well, I think we have part of the solution already in front of us. We just haven't fully funded it, and that's the Portland Street Response Program. You know, the Portland Street Response is interacting with those folks that are problematic, that have problems on the street, and is able to get them those wraparound services that are so important to be able to get them into the system of recovery. And so I would make it a point as a city councilman to fully fund the Portland Street Response Program, and that's one thing that we can do. Secondly, what we have to do is maintain this empathetic approach to it. I mean, it's, I am fully against the criminalization of unauthorized camping, and because it just, it does not make sense. All we're doing is transferring the responsibility of them from the city to the, to the, to the county and to the police department and to the jail system, and which is already underfunded, tremendously underfunded. So I think it's just, it's, it's being treated like a panacea versus an actual solution. And so, yeah, we need to have more wraparound services, we need to fully fund Portland's street response. Also, we need to fully fund the staffing of the Portland Police Department so that they have the 1,100 police out there on the streets, helping to mitigate things. Right now, there's less than 800 police that are fully funded.
Sarah, your thoughts on the camping ban?
Yeah, I guess I'm really confused why we're talking about a camping ban when we have over 5,000 people who are unsheltered and we have less than 3,000 shelter beds. That leaves 2,000 people who would have to go to jail, and I don't think we have 2,000 cells to put them in. So to me, the solution is not more police. The solution is shelter and housing, because we've got the people who are currently on the streets and need immediate shelter, and then you have people who currently are working full-time jobs and cannot find a place to live in Portland. So the money that we would spend on more police could be put into shelters and housing. And once, once it's no longer a norm to be on the streets, I don't think people are going to... Living on the streets is not fun. It's cold, it's hard, it's unsafe. It's unsafe for the people living there. So this idea that there is some huge number of people that are going to refuse to go into shelter that's available, I don't believe it.
Eli?
Yeah, I absolutely support it. So until we do the work of building sufficient shelter space, this is going to be a targeted intervention. And if you live in a neighborhood where you've seen maybe a giant camp or there's a problem one next to your school or something like that, this is a tool that allows us to say, "We did the work, we've got a spot for you, we've got a tiny house, we have shelter, but you can't be blocking this sidewalk anymore." And if a person refuses to go along with that, we have to remove the camp. And there's lots of outs for them to not have any sort of penalty here, but if they refuse to go along with them, it's okay for us as a community to have rules, to have basic expectations about things like not blocking sidewalks or, you know, sort of not creating, well, issues like shigella downtown. So we can have rules, we can enforce them. It's a compassionate rule because it requires we offer them a good option.
Olivia Clark.
I actually agree with Eli. I'm, I support the camping ban. I'm compassionate, but I think there are a lot of people in Portland who are feeling a certain amount of compassion fatigue. I do believe that there are dangerous people on the streets. I've had a friend who was chased by a homeless person with a knife. And so there are situations where there's a public safety issue or public health issue where we really need to remove people off of the street. And there are incidences where people who do go to jail actually are set up with services, who actually change their lives. So it's not all gloom and doom going to jail necessarily, but I think I support the camping ban.
Mitch Green, what do you think?
Yeah, I tend to agree with some of the other candidates who are skeptical of the service-resistant population among the homeless. I think in general, there is a significant share of homeless people who, or families who have been evicted, who have experienced traumas. And if you take a, you know, carceral approach first, you're just going to reinforce those traumas and make it even more difficult for those people to reintegrate in society should those shelter beds or kind of housing solutions exist. So, so I kind of believe in, when it comes to public policy, there are no shortcuts. And this, this camping ban approach feels like a shortcut to me. I think that there was a time in this city's history where we did big things very quickly. We used to build a carrier ship in eight days, you know? There was a time. And so I think that until we're serious about saying, "What is it going to take to act swiftly, with intention, and execute?" We should avoid those shortcuts.
Ben?
I think we've experimented with a lot of things. We've experimented with drug legalization, we've experimented with allowing people to camp, and I'm sort of tired of the experimentation. We need to take our city back. So I support the camping ban and all that that entails, including criminalization. That being said, I think I'm in agreement with everyone here that there need to be a lot of other options before you get there, but you need to have the final answer, which is yes. If, if it has gotten to that point, then it does go all the way to criminalization. We all support many options for, for other options, for them to go to shelters, for, for better alternatives, because for one, a night in a prison is extraordinarily expensive. So the ideal scenario would be, number one, I don't think we should have laws that we don't enforce, so we have that law, we should enforce it. I would love to see all of the options before it's enforced, and that's what we need to work to, because enforcing it is not great for the person and it's not great for our expense.
City of Portland and Multnomah County support the Joint Office of Homeless Services. There's been some tension between city and county government over how money should be spent to address homelessness. Would you, as candidates, like to see the city continue its participation in the Joint Office of Homeless Services? Would you like to see that continue? Stan, let's begin with you on this one.
Yes, I would. We have to find a way, as I said earlier, for the city and the county to work together, or we're not going to be able to solve this problem. Let's face it, the reality is that the money is at the county. The city does not have the funds to deal, provide the services that are necessary. So yes, I think we have to be there, but we have to help influence the county to do some things better. We need a data system. We have to know who's on the street. The county... The county has to spend the money wisely and efficiently, and they have to hold the social service agencies accountable. And I think the city can help in that regard by working much more closely with the county. And I am very hopeful with the relatively new director of the Joint Office of Homeless Services, that we are going to be able to get there and be able to work together better.
Moses, you are up.
I think we need stronger collaboration with the county. Right now, with this new form of government, we're going to have 12 folks that are going to be able to oversee the county's actions much easier. So I'm advocating that we have a special committee that has representatives from the council helping to guide JOHS and their priorities. We need stronger transparency, we need more transparency from JOHS, we need more accountability from JOHS, we need more oversight, not only on their effectiveness of their programs, but on their budget. So, and then of course, we need to have the option of pulling out of our participation with the Joint Office if they're not fulfilling those basic obligations of oversight, transparency, and budget accountability. So right now, I would stay with JOHS, and I would also make sure that we expand the model. They focus on a housing-first model, and there's benefits to that, it's a proven benefits to that. But we also need to make sure to fund other options, like for instance, over there at Bybee Lakes, where they have that program that is not a housing-first model, it's a drug-free approach.
Sarah, stay with the Joint Office, what do you think?
I think that we should give the new council six months to mend relationships with the county and see... My understanding is that right now, it's called the Joint Office of Homeless Services, however, the county really runs it. And I, like, I wouldn't want to say we're part of a joint office, that's not actually a joint office. However, I, you know, there's been a lot of finger pointing. I think we can come in with a fresh slate, make new relationships, and I'm hopeful that with fresh blood, we'll be able to negotiate and make sure that the county's on board and we're on board and we're effective. So we have a very clear mandate from our population right now that we need to shelter people immediately. So housing first is not housing only, it includes all of the other services. And the county is responsible for mental health and behavioral health. The city cannot open up a new, like, mental health institution, that has to be the county and the state. So we don't want to pull out, we want them to make them do their job.
Swing back around to the beginning here. Eli, what do you think?
Only if the Joint Office is willing to change how they're going about business. So we need much better accountability for the money we're spending. We're nine years into this, we've never been farther from ending unsheltered homelessness. And they have wanted to only focus on housing, which like I said earlier, is this long-term solution. But it's not enough, and we're getting farther and farther away from our goal. So if they're willing to commit to an emergency timeline to make sure that the homeless people I work with every day have something to look forward to this year, so we can actually start seeing some progress, then great. If not, then maybe time to start figuring something else out.
Olivia Clark?
I think the jury's out, Steve. I think we need to wait a little bit longer before we actually hit the nuclear option on the Joint Office. What I really would like to see is more metrics, other people have mentioned that, more measurement, more accountability on the part of the folks that they're giving the money to. But I also want to see the city and the county and metro and the state all join together to pull in the same direction on what the solutions are, all lobby together at the federal level to get more help from the federal government on this issue as well. But the jury's still out on the Joint Office.
Mitch Green?
Yeah, I tend to favor staying in it. I think the root of most of the issues in our city is a lack of administrative capacity, and you don't build administrative capacity by tearing up agreements and starting over and pointing fingers. I do tend to agree with Olivia here that it's going to require a multi-pronged approach where we engage municipalities, state, and federal government to kind of bring together best practices and funding methods. But I think part of the issue is we need to build public sector capacity, and we need to kind of get away from this model of relying upon consultancies that rely upon consultancies and so on and so forth. And that's how you waste money, and that's how you avoid accountability.
Ben, what do you think about this?
The Joint Office of Homeless Services is a disaster, and it's been a disaster since it was founded in 2017. The only problem we have, we don't have a better solution. So you're going to be looking at a few new people at the county, and you're going to be looking at 12 new people at City Council. So to pull out at this moment, or to advocate for that, would be hubris. It doesn't make any sense. I do think I agree with a couple people who are up here, Eli and Olivia, that we need to give it a period of time, and that's between six months and a year, to say, "Here are the metrics that we intend for you to accomplish," whether that's people off the street or people in treatment, "and then here's the budget." I mean, we have a budget of $420 million for the Joint Office of Homeless Services, and we have in the neighborhood of 6,000 homeless people, that's $70,000 per person per year. That's an extraordinary amount of money. And I believe we should be getting much better service for the amount of money we're spending. And so that metric is what we should, would aim for. So if we can't hit some form of progress within a year, then I would say we need to go a different direction.
Chad, what do you think?
I think that if you want to go far, you go together, if you want to go fast, you go alone. I think that we should stay in the Joint Office of Homeless Services. Everybody likes pointing to the county as the source of all of our problems, but the city has not been a good partner for other jurisdictions. I have a lot of support from state representatives, metro councilors, and the leading candidate right now for county commission. We have to be good partners for the people in the county, and for metro, and for state on these things. For instance, just recently, they couldn't open the Arbor Lodge Shelter because the city didn't do its job on permitting there. So our job as a city is to permit and cite shelters and places for sobering and detox and treatment. If we don't do that, the county can't do its job. So we really need to have both of us working together.
We're going to shift gears just a little bit here. The addiction crisis, another huge issue in this city. Here's a question for you on that topic, let's play that.
How are we navigating the fentanyl crisis sort of with the legislation that's been repealed, Measure 110?
State legislators recriminalized possession of small amounts of hard drugs like fentanyl in Oregon, and allowed counties to implement deflection programs that went into effect on September 1 of this year. Is this enough to tackle Portland's drug crisis? If not, what changes will you push for? Is this enough? If not, what are the changes that you will push for? Moses, let's start with you.
No, it's not enough. Fentanyl is a vicious, insidious drug, and all of our recovery system programs right now are meant for drugs that are not as insidious as fentanyl. And so we have to be realistic. You know, I feel like we need to put, we need more beds, we need more opportunity for people to get into the system of addiction recovery. But the challenge is, is that fentanyl is brand-new, and we're using the wrong addiction-recovery model to deal with it. And so I think we need to be really realistic about it. I have major empathy for folks that are recovering from addiction because of family history, and I know that it can work, but we have to make sure though, that we take an empathetic approach to it and a realistic approach to it.
Sarah, what do you think?
Yeah, I think if we had deflection centers, it would be great. But this was passed back in September, and last I checked, Multnomah County's deflection center is not open yet. So it's not going to work if we don't have deflection centers. It's a little bit like the homeless situation. Putting people in jail is not going to solve their drug addiction. However, leaving them on the streets is not going to solve their drug addiction either. So we absolutely have to have treatment, and this is my deepest frustration with our relationship with the county, is that drug treatment is very squarely within the realm of the county. The city does not have the jurisdiction to open up mental health treatment centers. So we absolutely need the county and the state to step up and do their work. I know this is a crisis that's 50 years in the making, but we need to treat it like the crisis that it is now. We are 48th amongst the states in terms of having access to mental health treatment. Mental health and drug addiction are tightly linked. So please, county, do your job, help us out here.
Addiction crisis is the issue. Eli Arnold, you're up.
Yeah, I've spent the last two years arresting fentanyl dealers. And I'm very glad that we've recriminalized possession. It's going to make it easier to tackle dealers, it's going to make it easier to disincentivize sort of blatant public use, and that's important. On the back end though, I've carried out some of the initial deflections, and it's very weak. So fentanyl is a terrible drug. I talk to people constantly who are users, and, I mean, I really empathize, it's got to be the hardest thing in the world to get off of it. And it is not easy enough to access treatment. And even if you have easy access to treatment, people need to push. I've got a very close friend who had a terrible drug addiction a couple of decades ago, and it was finally mandatory treatment that got her off of methamphetamine and back to being a mom. And she, you know, she's got a wonderful family and has lived a good life since then. We need to be willing to get uncomfortable and push when people really need our help. The lifespan of somebody who's using fentanyl on the sidewalk is not long enough to just wait and hope.
Olivia?
You know, Steve, we're taking people and pulling them out downstream, out of the stream. I feel like we need to go upstream on this issue as well, not just the addiction issue, but go upstream and work with law enforcement to stop fentanyl from coming into the country. We need to work with our congressional delegation to strengthen the border controls to do that, to capture the dealers, to stop this drug from coming in. In addition to all the helping people downstream, we need to go upstream and work on this issue as well.
Mitch, what do you think?
I mean, we've been fighting the war on drugs for decades, and we keep having new drugs enter our supply despite billions and billions of dollars spent on trying to prevent it from flowing into our communities. And that's going to continue to be the case as long as we continue to think of it as a criminal enterprise. Of course, there's criminal activity associated with it, but I think we need to have overdose prevention sites and evidence-based treatment for folks who want to get clean and healthy. And we need to have like a standing reserve army of treatment specialists who are ready to go, because there is a window of opportunity in every addict's life where they are ready to say, "Okay, I'm ready to take a change." And they shouldn't have to worry about paperwork, they shouldn't have to worry about insurance. You just, you know, Portland Street Response shows up, and then they can take them somewhere. And that's how they get clean. This is very close to me. I have a family member who struggled with a heroin addiction for many years, and we thought we were going to lose him, and it took wraparound services, it took me calling the judge and his union to get him clean, and I just think everyone deserves that.
Addiction crisis, what do you think, Ben?
This is a real failure of our system at the county and at the city. I agree with Sarah at the county. The county is responsible for drug treatment, and we have a real failure here. The recriminalization of fentanyl and use of illegal drugs is important, it is necessary. Illegal drugs need to be illegal even if they're just for your use. Now, if that's the only thing that you have been accused of that you have is possession, you're not doing another crime, then I do agree with deflection. Deflection directly into treatment should be a very simple binary choice. You are headed to jail. If you would like to seek treatment instead, here is your option. It doesn't need to be at the jail, but it needs to be that same day. You need to commit to treatment on that day. You can't check in a month later, which is what our current model is. Right now, the county plan with the deflection center in Sandy and Buckman is to take a building that's not suited for a deflection center and to pour $2 million into a building that used to be a print shop. And if they're successful and they get their second permit, they will have spent a year and over $2 million to get 12 treatment beds. Now, treatment beds can go in any commercial building, they can go in any existing commercial office. Why did we seek to choose a building that's inappropriate for that? So we could have a lot more beds in a lot less time if you just had some sensible leadership.
Chad?
Yeah, this is a really personal issue to me. I was born to teenage parents, and my mom suffered from addiction from a really early age. And the families that I'm fighting for in District 4, they have people that are suffering on the streets right now from fentanyl and from meth and other drugs. Right now, half the people that voluntarily seek treatment are turned away and say, "We can't help you." And if you can't reach somebody in that moment of clarity, what Mitch was talking about, you may not get a second chance. And so I don't feel comfortable taking somebody that's asking for treatment and telling them, "No, I can't help you because I'm going to create a spot for somebody that doesn't want it and won't benefit from it." It's also financially a big hit. When you voluntarily seek treatment, you're more likely to qualify for Medicaid, so the federal dollars can cover it, and we don't have to come after you for state and local taxes. With involuntary commitments, they don't qualify for Medicaid, and it can be up to like a half million dollars for the kinds of interventions that we need right now. So if you think about every person that is forced into treatment, we lose several people that we could have given it to voluntarily. And that could be the same person depending on which day you see them. So we need to be ready to help people that are dealing with the kind of drugs that we just have never had to respond to in the past.
Stan, we'll end with you on this question.
So Measure 110, for example, looked great on paper, and it didn't work. So we tried to fix it with House Bill 4002, using deflection as a method. It sounds good on paper, but again, I don't see how it's going to work. The deflection, we've seen that the county is unable to urgently put together a deflection center, and even if you get people to deflection, where do they go after that? Where are the centers for detoxification? Where's the residential housing where you want to move somebody to after that? It doesn't exist, and that's the problem. And it's not just, there's not much the city can do about this, this is a county issue, but it's also a state issue. Because as I think Sarah said, we're 48th in providing mental health services, actually I think we're 50th, but the state has to play a role in this as well. If we don't have a place to take somebody for treatment, then this isn't all going to work.
Next question, 40. What do you see as the most pressing public safety issue in your district, and what will you do to address that? Most pressing public safety issue in your district? Sarah, let's start with you on this one.
You know, I actually think the most pressing public safety issue right now is what we've been talking about, it's homelessness. I think somebody mentioned that there was somebody, you know, running down the street with a knife in terms of criminalizing homelessness. And I would say, running down the street with a knife is a crime that is separate from being homeless. But I also see that when people are living on the streets, it doesn't feel safe. I don't feel safe taking my kids past a row of tents. And so while it's not a crime to be poor, over 50% of police calls and arrests are related to homelessness. And that takes our police officers' time away from true crimes that need a police presence. So again, we need to treat it like an emergency, we need to get people sheltered, we need to do it in the next six months, not the next six years.
Most pressing public safety issue, Eli?
Yeah, we have a terrible police capacity issue. We're down to about half the number of police per capita as we had in 1995. And this sort of long slide, we got away with it for a while, but when we had a sort of spike in crime rate here a few years ago, we had nothing to cover. And so, you know, on a daily basis, if you watch calls come in through the Bureau of Emergency Communications, you see the systems become overwhelmed. And, you know, there are times when nobody's getting a response. And so it's terrible for the person who needs help, who's called 911. It's terrible for the officer who's attempting to address very serious needs. And, you know, it's tough, it's tough to know there's no safety net in those kind of situations. So we need to fix the police capacity issue, the number of officers we have. And on the other side, as was mentioned, a huge proportion of 911 calls are related to a very small population of unsheltered homeless people. So anything we can do to stabilize that population, to reduce their need, is going to really free up capacity.
Olivia, what do you think?
I have to agree with Eli. I think we have something like .9 police officers per thousand people in Portland. The national average is 2.4. We don't need the national average, but we definitely need more police. What I hear in District 4 from the people I talk to is a concern with a 911 response and a concern with speeding through the neighborhood. And there is really no police response at this point because the traffic division, I think, has been cut to maybe a dozen people. But those are two top issues that I hear in District 4 that we need to address.
Mitch Green?
I'm going to take this in a slightly different direction. I tend to think that the most pressing public safety issue is the lurking threat of the critical energy infrastructure hub becoming destabilized and exploding in the event of a natural disaster, like an earthquake or a fire. And there is a relatedness between a disaster in Linton there and its likelihood that it's going to cause a forest fire in Forest Park. And many people live in Forest Park and adjacent, and in that kind of crisis, they will not be able to get out of those communities. We have a very thin emergency management system in Portland, and I think that it would be a very expensive disaster to address. And so it's really urgent that we... And so it's really urgent that we not forget about that public safety issue and do the investments we need to get those tanks moved.
Ben, what do you think it is? Pressing public safety issue, your district.
When I talk to people door to door, I talk to them about a lack of confidence in the public safety system. And that's not just simply the call time on the police, but that is a big part of it. So it's a real issue and it's perceived by my neighbors as something that is threatening to them. One is, we need to staff the police at appropriate levels, as we've talked about. We have 80 vacancies right now and we need to fill those first. We can rebuild our police force in the model that Portland wants because actually our numbers are pretty small and we have a glass half full. So we can build the, we can build the police force that we need. There are a lot of calls that are non-emergency calls. And with that, we need to talk about community policing and we need to talk about Portland Street Response. For me, as a business owner, I made a 911 call because I had an active burglary going on and I was told, we don't come to break-ins anymore. And that's really frustrating for normal people. And then finally, Eli has a great point, you know, over, close to 50% of our calls have to do with homeless people. If we can solve that problem, we have a downstream benefit for the entire public safety system.
Chad, what do you think?
Yeah, again, you can't fix by enforcement what you mess up by design. So for all the things we're talking about, we have to have an intelligent approach to how we approach it. When it comes to our, and I think the most pressing urgent need right now is certainly the people that are unsheltered. We haven't designed a shelter system. The East Coast cities have a right to shelter and instead we debate how long should the punishment be for being sheltered? We do have record numbers of traffic fatalities and we can't enforce our way out of that. We built roads with design speeds that are far above the speed limit. And when you have over 80% of people going more than 10 miles over the speed limit, you're not going to be able to enforce your way out of it. We need to have modal filters and different traffic calming measures for that. You know, for the CEI hub, Mitch is right here, we got to answer two basic questions. How much does it cost to reduce and relocate it? And where could we put it where it wouldn't just move our problems to another community?
Stan.
So I agree with everyone on the, about the police and the need for community policing and that we need to build up our police bureau. We should have 1,200 police eventually. City of Milwaukee comparable size has 1,650 police officers. But we need to build up our police bureau in a way that it works for all our communities. We need training. We need better, we need to bring training to here rather than doing it in Salem where we can customize the training to our needs here in our city. We need to fully fund Portland Street Response, but Portland Street Response has to be, has metrics and be responsible for outcomes. And also, I wanted to touch on the CEI hub as well. It's something that very few people are aware of. And it is, it is a danger that's lurking down the road. People are not aware of all those tanks that are up there in the Linton neighborhood that has 100% of all the aviation fuel and 90% of all the fuel that serves the entire state. So a derailment, an earthquake, a fire, that would be a disaster, not just for our city, but it would be a disaster for the region and the entire state as well. And the city can do some things to push improvements over there.
Moses, we'll end with you on this question.
I think the biggest challenge is, is public safety wise, is related to what folks have been saying about the House and this issue. But I think the key to solving it is solving it in the downtown core. Where the downtown core goes, the rest of the city follows. And so from day one in my campaign, it's all been about the revitalization of our city, the revitalization of the downtown core. And how do we do that? I think that we need to do a concerted effort, citywide concerted effort, to clean up the trash, to clean off the graffiti, to get rid of the abandoned cars, to reestablish a sense of community pride in where we live by involving the community in that process. Once we get that, we can do whatever, we can do big things in the city. We can attract more business into the downtown core. We can attract more residents into the downtown core. I have a program with, called Live in Downtown PDX, where we're converting the, all that office space, the convertible, the office space that we can convert into affordable housing. My Clean and Green Portland program is modeled off of a very successful one in Philadelphia. But we have to take care of these basics. And right now in the city council, we're not taking care of basics and it's, it's coming out in these problems.
Going to switch gears again. The cost of living in Portland is a factor for so many people. You know that. Here's what we heard from one gentleman. Let's play that.
So in this area, I feel there is a need for more affordable housing and lower taxes for average people.
What is your plan to create more affordable housing in the city of Portland? What is your plan? Eli, let's start with you.
You know, I've heard the same thing from both the subsidized affordable housing builders and the market rate builders. And that is our permitting system is way too unpredictable, takes far too long, and it really prevents the building that we need from happening. And I think earlier we mentioned that the way we currently fund staff in permitting doesn't make sense. So we need stable staffing there based on need. We need to have aggressive targets for how long it takes to get a permit. So Boston, for instance, has a fast track program right now where some permits, they guarantee you they'll resolve it within seven days. We don't even have targets for how long it takes. One developer recently told me he built 100 houses in Oregon City while still waiting on a permit for a duplex in Portland. So we've got to address that. And to the gentleman's point there, I think we need to do a big look at how this city is sort of funding its operations across the board. And I do hear a lot of complaints from people that they don't feel like they're getting their money's worth from their taxes.
Olivia Clark, what do you think?
I hear exactly the same thing, Eli. And I agree with Eli in terms of streamlining our permitting process, changing our zoning. Those are really important issues. We all hear about that. I have friends in Selwood who are trying to add a bedroom and a bathroom on the first floor. They're still waiting after five months for a permit, which is very sad. But to the gentleman on the street, I think it's going to be up to the new city council to think about the budget in terms of our essential services. What do we really need to be doing in this city? We're going to have to make some tough decisions about the budget. It's not going to be easy. And I don't think anybody wants this new council to come out with any new tax measures or taking anything to the ballot that raises more revenue to pay for the things that we want. We have to go back and look for where we can actually save money, where we can make cuts, and really fund our essential services.
Mitch Green.
Yeah, my approach to this is to be direct and create a program called Social Housing. Social housing is a mixed income development model where your rent is a function of your income. So, you know, if we talk about affordable housing, it really needs to mean something. 30% of your income if you're poor, 30% of your income if you're rich, and then the one subsidizes the other. We already spend a lot of money trying to stimulate and subsidize and promote the development of affordable housing with very little effect. And, you know, affordable housing can be very close to market rent. And I think that folks are struggling with the fact that we haven't actually been super committed to that. And so if I'm elected, I'm going to push hard for that.
Ben Hufford, what do you think?
Well, I'm an architect and I've built housing. I have done 300 permits in the city of Portland. And as you guys said, it is an actual disaster. The average permit time for an apartment building in Portland is 501 days. So add that plus design review of six months, you've got a three-year timeline. And no developer I know knows what the interest rate is going to be three years from now. In the state report and in the city report, we need 6,000 units to be provided to Portland through private enterprise, through social housing, through however we do it. We need 6,000 per year. In 2024, we built 1,400. This year, we're on track to open fewer than 500. And those people, I mean, scarcity makes things more expensive. It's the fundamental rule of the market and housing is a market. So unless we can build housing, we are going to continue to have a shortage and become more and more like San Francisco. So I say on my stump, how do you keep kids from buying cigarettes? You make the rules really hard, you enforce it through a third party, and you tax it. That's exactly what we do for housing in Portland. We have 28 different reviews for a permit. In Hillsborough, there are four. It's 501 days to get a permit here. I can get a permit in a month in Hillsborough. And we tax it at $35,000 a unit for market rate housing. That's absurd. You should tax things you don't want.
Chad, what do you think?
Yeah, so a complete approach includes attention to supply, subsidy, and stabilization. Some of the things that people are talking about will be helpful for supply. Expediting permitting and figuring out how to consolidate that so that you don't get conflicting feedback from different reviewers is really important. I'm a big supporter of Portland Neighbors Welcome. They've endorsed the campaign, their Inner East Side for All, which would allow development up to four stories in the inner east side plus ground floor retail. That unlocks the potential to build homes that are much more affordable because you can put more on each lot. Subsidy, there are people living on fixed incomes or people with disabilities that will never be able to afford market rate. And long-term rental subsidies are a terrific way of keeping them housed and closer to the people and places they love. And finally, stabilization. I spent a half a day in eviction court and got to see the work of people who represent folks that are facing eviction for non-payment of rent. They're only able to be there to give them representation Tuesdays through Thursdays because their budget is just over $1 million. If you show up on a Monday or a Friday, nobody's there to help you. A small investment in eviction representation could save us millions of dollars in the need to shelter people, especially families.
Stan Penkin.
So developers are not investing in Portland right now. And this past year, we built 500 units of housing. We do need 6,000 a year. Permitting and excessive fees are an impediment towards development. So we need to, we need to look at reducing fees. The current city council has done a lot of work to consolidate the permitting process, but we as a city council have to make sure that that works, that the implementation works. We also, we also have to encourage the building of duplexes, triplexes. And we have to look at how we design our multifamily buildings. We have to create more communal spaces so that we can get more, more units into a particular building, even looking at the size of units. We also have to look at innovative solutions such as home sharing, which I am proud to be the co-founder of HomeShare Oregon, where we connect people in need of housing to affordable housing by utilizing an inventory of spare rooms that exists throughout the entire state.
Moses.
I think the biggest problem that we have, and I think the linchpin to solving this problem, is streamlining the permitting process. Ben had a really good point there about the differences between the permitting approvals between the city of Hillsborough and the city of Portland. Six months versus six days is a dramatic difference. And we have to really focus on that missing middle housing. Right now, there's, you know, we've, we've had a focus on higher income and higher income housing, like in the downtown core. We've had a focus on transitional housing and temporary housing with the TASS system. There's the missing housing, workforce housing and a basic affordable housing for folks that, like myself, who are renters. And I would work with faith-based and community-based organizations to increase that inventory. And I think we need to be working with groups like of higher education, like Portland Community College. They have tons of property out there and they have already started to build housing projects to, to help stimulate their attendance and their participation in their programs. And they're just waiting for partners for the city to help and work with them to create it for all.
Sarah, you will have the last word on this.
All right. So I am going to echo some of the things folks have already mentioned. One is permitting. So I'm an engineer. I've worked for the city for the last 12 years. The last two years have been in permitting. So I have had firsthand experience with how complex and hard to translate our city codes and rules are and how they conflict with each other. And the current city council has made some efforts to improve things, but there is still much more work to be done. That's part of what I, why I'm running. I am familiar with the codes that need to be changed and I will be able to come in. And I, I don't think it's going to be hard to get seven votes to streamline our permitting. What our councilors are going to need to know is what codes need to be fixed and how. There are a whole host of employees who do this for a living and they can tell you which ones we repeatedly see problems with. And they will even have suggestions on how it should be fixed. So that's the number one thing. That is not going to immediately solve the problem. So I really like Stan's suggestion about encouraging people to rent out rooms and their ADUs so that we can immediately bring down the cost of rent. You have to make people feel safe to share space in their homes.
You all have been really enjoyable to listen to. I just want you to know that. I could do this for another hour. What about you? That's it for the forum today. Our thanks to you and for watching at home as well. The candidates for participating in this program sponsor Willamette University. To view the forums from District 1 through 4, go to k2.com YouTube page, click playlist, and they'll appear in your voice your vote section. Also, there are many more candidates running for Portland City Council than we've been able to show you in these forums. We'll have the interviews with most of the candidates on k2.com starting the week of October 14th.
The previous special program was sponsored by Willamette University.